Good evening, Mayor Skilman and council members. It is 7:00 PM if you'd like to begin.
Perfect, thank you so much. So, welcome everybody to our virtual meeting for the joint meeting of the Katati City Council and the successor agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency on April 28th, 2020. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we do a roll call, please. Councilmember Deloso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Skilman? Here, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, please. If everybody could please join me, thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance...
Allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we'll move on to item number four, approval of minutes from the regular meeting on April 14th, as well as the special meeting from April 21st.
I'll move to approve the, um, meeting on the 14th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Or, sorry, roll call. Sorry, I just realized to ask people for roll call since we're virtual. Councilmember Deloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lehman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman? Yes, thank you. Okay, so a 5-0 vote to approve. Um, then I'm looking for a motion on the April 21st meeting. So, move?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sorry again, a call, a roll call vote. Councilmember Deloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Lehman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman? Yes, thank you. Okay, so it's a 5-0 vote to approve as well. I'll move on to item five for announcements. Begin with a meeting orientation for new attendees or viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kataticy.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Katati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixl.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we will continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based, as well as by appointment by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions, 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@city, sorry, info@kataticy.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media challenges, channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixl, and Nextdoor. Okay, so we'll move on to item six, which is Proclamations. And, um, this meeting, we have a proclamation of the city council of the City of Katati recognizing April 2020 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I do have a proclamation which I will read quickly. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has profound and lasting impact on every community member of Sonoma County. And whereas Verity, Sonoma County's Rape Crisis Trauma and Healing Center, worked with over 1,000 survivors in Sonoma County in 2019. And whereas national research indicates that one in five women will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and nearly half of all women will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas one in 17 men will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and one in five men will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas young people are at the greatest risk of sexual violence, and youth aged 12 to 17 are two and a half times more likely to be raped, sexually assaulted, or sec... Or experience some form of sexual violence, I'm guessing is the missing words, than their adult counterparts. And whereas disabled people, people of color, queer people, homeless people, transgender people, undocumented people, youth in foster care, and people of other marginalized identities are even more likely to be victimized by sexual violence. And whereas over 18,000 members of the military and over 80,000 people who are incarcerated and experience sexual violence every year. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in the City of Katati through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas the City of Katati strongly supports the efforts of Verity and encourages every resident to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors of all backgrounds connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Therefore, be it resolved, the City of Katati reaffirms its commitment to address the issues of rape and sexual violence by remembering victims, believing and supporting survivors, holding perpetrators accountable for their actions, and challenging societal myths and behaviors that perpetuate sexual violence in our community. And be it further resolved that along with the United States government and State of California, the City of Katati designates the month of April 2020 the Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And Lauren, I forgot to check in advance. Is there anybody here today on behalf of Verity? Mayor Skilman, no, there is not. Okay, then we will sign and send out that proclamation and move on to item seven, which is approval of the final agenda. Um, I'll ask city manager Damian Obit, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. There's no proposed changes tonight.
Okay. Then with that, we will move on to citizens' business and public comment or consent calendar items. My goodness, you guys are all going to get tired of my voice. Okay. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any items not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. Mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. And I will turn it over to our city clerk, Lauren Nurgis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. To make a public comment, use the raise hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial *9 if you're using gesture telephone. Please then listen carefully for the mayor or myself, the city clerk, to address you by name or phone number. And for the audible Zoom notification that you have been unmuted, once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin. And I do have a raised hand. Laurie Alderman, please go ahead.
Hi, um, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, first of all, you're s... Even though I got the district attorney's, um, input and how I'm changing this, how to get city, um, public, the public comment, it's still almost impossible. Last week, the last few meetings, um, we've had only like one password and we had a wait before five. This one, you have to have a Zoom account, you have to, you guys haven't publicized it. It's not the city's Facebook. It's not like we're walking downtown to see the thing that there's a city. Some people don't have the internet, and here we are, one, I'm probably the only one who figured it out again. Um, and what your changes were, were to make it basically ba... Barely legal. It's not still facilitating public input, so you need to work on that. The other issue is, when are we going to get actual services for the cr... the pandemic? Everything that you put out, it seems to be somebody else's, um, work. Somebody else's, some other organization. We don't have, you haven't done anything for the seniors, for the adults. The recreation program, yes, and the children, but there's a whole lot of else that don't have that. Um, so that's an, uh, issue. Um, that, and also, we don't have any idea what the impact, financial impact. You guys switched the budget meeting, so we don't know what's happening to the general fund. I mean, for, Rota Park has been saying for a month has a whole plan, and you guys have published nothing to say how you're going to survive the con... The, this crisis. And what's happening, you know? We need more than, you know, have it online for a few people that do. Uh, you need to publicize what's happening with the city, not just the, the good things that you want to put on the Facebook to look good. You've got to put on everything. Um, I guess that's it as far as my public, public comment. And I don't want to speak on consent.
Okay, Mayor Skilman? Those are, that was the only raised hand.
Okay, and there's nobody who's calling in, it looks like, um, so... We, we can, um, move on then, I believe, to consent calendar. Item number nine.
Mayor Skilman, if I can interject a...
Yes.
Jenny Blaker just raised her hand.
Oh, then let's go back to public comment, absolutely.
Jenny, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I'm sorry to, uh, cause that little glitch. Um, and also apologize, I wasn't at the April the 14th meeting when the redebate ordinance was being discussed. I just wondered if it would be possible to pull it from the consent calendar in order to explain some of the details a bit more clearly. Um, I did send in some questions in writing today, and, um, Damian has answered a lot of them individually, but I'm still wondering whether it wouldn't be possible to include something more about the five-foot non-combustible zone and home hardening. And I would like to see the phrase about chemical spraying, um, as an abatement method deleted, because although Katani passed a ban on synthetic herbicides and pesticides in August 2019, and that was for the city work on city property, um, it doesn't seem right that the fire district should be able to go and spray herbicides on people's private property in Katati. I'm sure the people who got that ban passed would not like to see that happening. Um, it seems to me there was quite a lot of, uh, lack of clarity about the ordinance and how it's going to work in practice. And although Damian took some trouble to explain to me by email today, um, I don't see a lot of what he wrote in plain English in his email reflected in the wording of the ordinance or the resolution. Um, I hope, I hope you understand what I'm, what I'm trying to say. I'm assuming that you got my email earlier today with some questions in it. Thank you.
Okay, was there anybody else who wanted to speak on citizens' business?
No more hands up, please.
Okay. Alright, so, um, we'll close all the comments and, um, bring it to council, um, for the consent calendar questions. City manager Obit, I don't know if he wanted to comment first or if we should bring it to council.
Um, so I, I can just make a quick comment on the, um, on some of the rebatement questions that Jenny had posed. So, uh, with respect to the, um... Oh, and before I actually go into this, I should also point out that, um, Battalion Chief Weeman is also on the line, so he could also maybe clarify things if I don't get something right here. But, um, with respect to the, um, non-combustible zone, that's a, that's, is my understanding, that's a fire concept where you basically have a, a completely vegetation-free buffer around your house, as opposed to a defensible space, which is a little bit of a different concept, um, where you're like cutting back vegetation, so it's defensible, kind of like it sounds. And, um, I know that the, the county is, they're tinkering with their ordinances, um, kind of now, and I think, um, it's something that, you know, maybe we want to have a discussion about this next winter, if that's something we want to discuss more. It's, the non-combustible zone is a, is kind of guidance at this point. I don't think that, to my knowledge, the county doesn't even use that. Because it's much easier to, um, institute something like that in a new construction-type project versus something that is, um, existing, because if you have an existing home, um, it's, it's more challenging, especially in a, in an urban area, to, um, create a five-foot vegetation-free strip around your house, um, after the fact. Um, so I'll just say that about that. And then the other thing I was going to mention was on the, um, synthetic herbicides. So, the, um, the mention of that word in the ordinance really has to do with, on private property, if, if a private landowner... It's just, I guess, one of the ways that a private landowner could try to control weeds on their property, but it, it isn't anything that I wouldn't think, um, and maybe Mike can confirm this with me, but I don't, I wouldn't expect that the fire district would ever use a herbicide on someone's property for a couple reasons. But one would be that, um, the weeds are tall on the property, and I don't know what good that would do to, um, kill, uh, weeds that are tall, and they would just be dead tall weeds, that would be a fire risk still. And then, um, secondly, I don't think they would want that type of liability to be spraying some sort of chemical on a private property. So with that, I just, um, I'll ask Mike if he has anything else that he would like to add, what I just said there.
This is Mike Weeman, Battalion Chief with Franchise and Refire. And I'll just confirm that it is not the policy of the fire department to use, uh, herbicide. That, that is just, uh, in the ordinance, because it's a choice for homeowners to make. Uh, also, the, the six-foot, uh, or I'm sorry, the five-foot hardscape around homes, that, that is a concept which we try to educate homeowners about. It is not yet in the county ordinance, and that's probably something that is going to be added, uh, in the near future. But for the moment, we're, we're kind of going with the same language that the county has, which reflects, uh, you know, the 30 and 100-foot zones. Uh, the, the home hardening and the, and the five-foot hardscape around the homes is an absolutely valid concept, and we do support that. We do try to educate homeowners.
Yeah, so thank you, Mike. Um, there, that's all I had.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to councilor, are there any questions about the consent calendar? Alright, I see a hand up for, um, councilmember Harvey. Go ahead.
I have to unmute first. Um, I'm happy to make a motion, um, for the consent calendar, but I would like to, uh, thank, um, Mr. Scott and Damian for, uh, answering the questions that I had on item B, the flooding building project. So, I really appreciate the time that they spent, um, looking at my questions and answering them. And with that, I'm happy to make a motion if there are no other comments.
It looks like we have one other hand up, so, uh, pause for just a second and ask, uh, councilmember Deloso.
Uh, thank you, mayor. You know, um, just to kind of continue a little further on what, um, Damian, the battalion chief, were talking about, you know, th- this is, even though there's been some language change, this is the same redebate concept and process. Um, I would just look at it a little bit more formal. And, um, I had a conversation with Mr. Hancock about, uh, some of the issues that were brought up earlier. And, uh, again, as Battalion Chief said, these are, they're legitimate issues, but this is just one method in trying to, uh, prevent some kind of catastrophic fire from taking off, and that is to keep the weeds at a bare minimum as far as height goes, so they, if they do catch fire, they can be pulled out very quickly. So, I think some of these other issues, especially things like hardscape, are at, would I kind of look at it as a higher level? And I'm not saying, you know, we shouldn't have those discussions, but I'm not sure that was the intent of this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any other hands up from council members, so I guess I can give it back to, uh, councilmember Harvey, um, if you're interested in making a motion.
Then I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
I will second, this is John Deloso.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the three items on the consent calendar. If we can take a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Deloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Lehman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And Mayor Skilman? Yes. Okay, so 5-0 vote. Thank you, everybody. And I'll move on to item number 10, which is direction on future agenda items. Did anybody have anything they wanted to add this, uh, meeting to a future agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands or any quick unmuting of microphones, so I will take that as a no this week. And, um, we can move on to item 11, which is the public hearing on City of Katati Economic Development Strategy and Implementation Plan.
Good evening, Mayor Skilman and members of the council. This is Noah House, redevelopment director for the city. Um, item 11, as you mentioned, uh, before you, this evening is the Economic Development Implementation and Strategy Project. And before we get into the presentation, um, I would just like to briefly thank everyone who's involved. And, uh, to our planning consultants, Dick and Mike Luwecki of Luwecki Planning Associates. If you all would like to request control of the presentation now, you can go ahead and do that while I just briefly give a few words of introduction, and then we can get going. Um, as I mentioned, I just wanted to say thank you. This is a kind of a team effort. Uh, and I wanted to say thank you to the public and community members who took the time to participate. Um, city staff who provided input. This was a multi-departmental effort. Obviously, our consultants, both the planning consultants, Dick and Mike Luwecki of Luwecki Planning Associates. And then also Bruin, uh, Bruin, Bruin and Associates, who are economists, who provide some input on the market conditions and some ideas for how we could formulate some of these strategies. Uh, obviously, the, the planning commissioners, who have taken their time, uh, to review this material at two separate previous meetings, and then, uh, you all, the council members. Um, nearly a year ago, uh, the city manager and the council prioritized this effort to support our existing and future business community, and the goals were to give flexibility and clarify, and clarity to the city's, uh, processes that affect their business operations. And given the economic realities that we're all facing today and the continued uncertainty moving forward, uh, from the staff perspective, the timing of this had to be more critical. As identified in the staff report and summarized in this presentation, this, as I mentioned, is a culmination of significant amount of process. There's been numerous iterations of these policy proposals based on community and, uh, planning commission input. And I wanted to just briefly highlight a couple, uh, extra elements of the community outreach that were undertaken but aren't really captured in some of the materials, uh, with the goal to kind of get some additional community engagement and input. This presentation and, or these, uh, this kind of packet of materials as it evolved was presented to the Katati Chamber of Commerce, both at a board meeting and at a membership meeting. Um, it was presented to the Rotary Club, uh, at one of their luncheons, uh, to allow them to hear what, what's intended to move forward and to get some input on their concerns. Um, it was presented to the local real estate community at the RE/MAX office in downtown. Staff went over it, presented to, uh, one of their, um, group office meetings. And then obviously, as identified in the staff report and will be highlighted later, there's numerous individual businesses and community members who are interviewed for this process. Uh, to summarize the, the presentation process, um, the city's planning consultant, Luwecki and Associates, are going to handle the bulk of the presentation. Uh, they're going to do an initial introduction, and then afterwards, staff, meaning myself, uh, will present a summary of the planning commission input, both their concerns and direction that they provided through two previous meetings, and then also the responses, how, how the policies have been modified to implement that direction or respond to those concerns. And then it'll be handed back over to Dick and Michael Luwecki to complete the presentation. And then we're all going to share, uh, in the responses to your comments or public concern or public input that we get, to ensure that, uh, we can address all the issues that arise and make sure any answers or any questions that come up are answered. So with that, uh, Dick, if you want to go ahead and get us started, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, Noah, and good evening, mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Um, I'm going to attempt to take, uh, uh, the PowerPoint. Noah, are you able to hear me?
I am, and I could, I could, I have no problem driving the presentation if that would be.
Okay, thank you. That would be kind of you. So my objective here this evening is to walk the council and the community through some of the important parts of what led up to development of this program. The important goals that we set out at the beginning of the process, all the way back in June of last year. The building blocks to the program that were put together leading to, as Noah said, a workshop and hearing before the commission, and now finally before you, the council. And then the detailed toolboxes, as we called them, the nuts and bolts of the refinements to the city codes, city procedures, and zoning map that we have recommended and the commission has endorsed. At the end of this presentation, you'll be asked to consider both a resolution dealing with the California Environmental Quality Act issues and an ordinance dealing with potential adoption of this program. So with that in mind, let me begin on Slide 2 by talking just briefly about the goals. This, this concept really began through important policies in your general plan, guidance from your city manager, Damian Obit, and a great deal of input we got from the community. And Kattati has been struggling in terms of attracting and maintaining the kind of, not only volume, but character of retail businesses that can sustain itself and can sustain its downtown over time. The goal was to capture a larger share of the discretionary purchases that bring with them additional services, jobs, and revenues to support city services. And as this happens in the downtown area, it was the opinion of your economists and us as planners that it would lead to a stronger sense of community and a more vital downtown setting. This was not an overhaul of your, of your codes and procedures, not by any stretch of the imagination. The idea was to look at weaknesses, areas of confusion or, or lack of clarity in the code, and importantly, to provide flexibility and incentives designed to attract the right kind of uses. And in particular, to go after those, well, call experiential uses, the restaurants, the activity, activities that we, we can't engage in at the moment, but in a post-recession economy are so important to make businesses survive and thrive in the context of online business that has grown exponentially in the last decade. We also wanted to look carefully at accommodating not only new development, but a maturing of uses and a diversity of uses within that development that support activity and quality of life in Kattati. Kattati, every time I talk to other professionals in other communities throughout the Bay Area, I'm constantly reminded that every community is unique, has its own set of goals and needs, and Kattati's no exception. And so as we approach this idea of encouraging and attracting the development, we had to look at that through the lens of your unique character, quality of life, history, all of those things that make this a special place, and make sure that we were looking at programs that would enhance that, not take away from it. So, next slide. This really shows you the process and the timeline that we began with. But as you look at the process during which we began in, in June of last year with kickoff, and then the working papers the next month, I want to, with this slide up, I'd like to just talk a little bit about what it took for us to really get up to speed and, and provide meaningful input to the process. We began with a kind of boots-on-the-ground analysis of properties in and around the downtown. We defined a, a strategy area that was more than just the downtown specific plan area, but included additional properties that could work on a synergistic basis with the downtown, and that also represented important land resources. We worked with the city's economists, Bruin and Bruin, your planning staff, city manager's office, the chamber, and a whole series of other stakeholders that included property owners, developers who've had experience here, others who want to have experience here, and end users, businesses that are operating in the downtown, those that have been frustrated, others that have been successful. And we tried to pull from those interviews and discussions kind of a, a bucket of opportunities and a separate bucket of constraints, problems to solve. And we spent a substantial amount of time talking to major property owners and developers within the study area in, in-depth interviews. And that included going through detailed plans, the long history of everything from the environmental constraints to the process and what came of projects as they went through the pipeline the first time or the second time. And from that, we began to develop alternatives. The proposed code amendments didn't come directly from the process. We had a kind of interactive dialogue between the city manager's office, Noah, ourselves, and the economists, looking at, testing the effectiveness of various different programs, and then looking to see to what extent they would be truly suitable in the context of Kattati's downtown. And from that emerged the DURAP program that became the basis of these toolboxes. Next slide. And Noah, if you'd like, I can walk through the planning commission review unless you would like to do that.
Go ahead.
So as our package came to the planning commission, we concurrently issued a notice for the completion of the CECL process, a negative declaration. And that went through a 45-day review process. And in the first study session with the commission, of course, there were a myriad of different questions having to do with process changes. As you, as we get into the toolboxes, you'll see that there were yellow and red and, and green colors that correspond to recommended changes in how land uses were to be dealt with. In some cases, we had a use that was allowed by major use permit, whereas we thought it would be more expeditious if we had standards in place to use an administrative process. In other cases, we went, we went the other way. But for the most part, we added flexibility to those sections of the code that we'll talk about in a moment. And certainly not all of the uses that, for which there's market demand, were suitable. Things like drive-throughs and mini-storage, some heavier intensive uses, automobile service and so forth, were previously identified to be incompatible in the downtown context, and those policies were maintained. I should note that one of the key areas of compatibility that we looked very closely at is the emerging interest in the marketplace for mixed-use projects. Uses that combine residential and commercial, or office and commercial, some entertainment uses in one venue. And again, activity-level-driven uses that have a outward positive effect on businesses around them. Next slide. The planning commission raised concerns and asked questions in a number of areas at the study session. And one of those was a concern to make sure that there was adequate control maintained in the decision-making process, that we weren't in an effort to accommodate a use, making it permitted by right without adequate standards, or if there were adequate standards, making sure that it could be processed in an efficient way. The commission asked us to add some uses, to modify other uses, and we made changes and came back to the commission at a public hearing with those additional recommendations. And again, you'll see those in the toolboxes. Next slide. One of the things that your staff spent some time on as a result of the study session being back with the commission was to look at the downtown proper and to make sure that we were adhering to the framework of the specific plan and the unique characteristics of the different zoning districts that make up the downtown specific plan. We also were asked by the commission to look very closely at biological resources in the context of development. That's always a sensitive subject. And Noah had pulled, as you see in this slide, some information from the downtown plan that highlighted how, how protection and visual exposure of wetland resources can sometimes be an educational tool, and how development can work around that and still accommodate resource protection. That is, in essence, one of the key elements of the program because we have those constraints throughout many of these properties. Next slide. So outlined in yellow is the strategy area that includes properties not only on the east side of town that include the downtown along Old Redwood Highway as the principal corridor, but then extending west along Highway 116, the Grabbin Steam Corridor. We, as you can see in the aerial, quite a bit of underdeveloped properties, as well as some important uses that have been developed over time. And we, we felt it was important to include all of these properties in our first effort at looking at incentivization of commercial uses because these represent the principal land resources in and adjoining the downtown. Next. And I'll go through these next slides fairly quickly. And please feel free to stop me if you have questions. We, very, on a very kind of high level, made some distinctions between properties that were substantially developed and those that were underdeveloped. And that allowed us to take a closer look at, at how much land area we had and to kind of drill down on what the constraints were on those underdeveloped properties to understand them better. Next slide. Here you see the zoning districts that are in place within the study area. The orange color being the Grabbin Steam Corridor Commercial. The four districts that comprise the downtown area. And north of the Grabbin Steam Commercial, of course, the, the commercial industrial area along Highway 101, along with a portion of the city sphere and planning area that is unincorporated, but had not yet been pre-zoned. Next slide. Next, we have a listing of the different programs and incentives that were developed. And we, we broke these down into what we call toolboxes, beginning with changes to the code that had to do with pre-application process. And very, very, very important in, in the context of encouraging the right kind of applications and helping applicants. Looking closely at the permit requirements for conditional uses in the downtown area, and in some cases, citywide. In Toolbox C, the design review process, trying to streamline that a bit and make it more focused. And Toolbox D, looking at mixed-use projects, as I mentioned a moment ago. Trying to find flexibility based on what we've learned from the market analysis we've done with Bruin and Bruin and through your, your planning staff, as to what is economically feasible. And to look at housing, not only as an element that's needed in the community, but an element that can frankly help to support the economics of a feasible mixed-use project that includes an important commercial component. In Toolbox E, we looked at alcoholic beverage sales again, looking to streamline the process where review of, of the sales of alcoholic beverages come into play if there is a conditional use, that, a use permit that is required. And the devil's always the details. A lot of time in Toolbox F was spent looking at definitions in the code. A lot of effort was made to provide clarity to a whole variety of different topics and to introduce some topics that had not yet been defined. Tasting rooms, for example, so that both the staff, the community, and property owners understand how the code works, and so the regulations can target the uses that are to be managed. Next slide. We also developed two informational toolboxes that are not part of the action item before council this evening. But nevertheless, important information in the pre-application process and in working with property owners and developers to give them guidance. And so that their time and money is, is focused appropriately. And that included, in Toolbox G, potential grant opportunities. Many of the programs that, or I should say steps that a developer has to go through in processing a major application are very expensive. And oftentimes, even if it's a change of use for a restaurant, we'll say, that may not have a lot of seed money to spend, it's very important to provide incentives and help to counterbalance some of those costs. And there are a number of programs that are available through regional state governments, some special entities, joint venture entities that can help defray those costs. And so we, it's a snapshot in time, but we laid out a series of different programs that are worth looking at to help pay for some of those costs. And Toolbox H had to do with habitat resources and habitat protection. Nothing that you will see or hear from us this evening Nothing that you will see or hear from us this evening in any way suggests that the important protection mechanisms for both animal and habitat resources would be diminished or eroded in any way. Rather, what we're proposing in Toolbox H, or what we have done, is suggest the gathering of site-specific scientific information to share with the community, with applicants, so they understand where those sensitive resources are, and they can design their projects accordingly to avoid impacts where possible. We've seen that in practice with successful projects, and the goal here was to harness that information and make it available on a broader basis so that more projects can follow suit. And there is a map amendment that is included that has to do with the roughly 15 acres that is on the west side of Highway 101, north of Grabenstein, the unincorporated property bounded by the city on three sides. The general plan has designated for Grabenstein Commercial, but it was not pre-zoned. And so putting a pre-zoning on it provides an indication of preferred land use type if and when the property annexes. Now, we're about to get into the detailed toolbox components of the presentation. I'd like to break for just a second and ask Noah if he'd like to add anything or if members of the council have any questions on the broader concepts before we go forward.
Just briefly, I would just add that some of the direction we heard from the Planning Commission was that the effort should be expanded beyond the identified strategy area and boundaries, with the goal to make sure that we made these changes to benefit all businesses throughout the city. We noticed as, and the Commission highlighted, as we were going through some of these changes that, in essence, and in some situations, we were literally making changes that would affect one property, like in the downtown, for example, that would, another property right adjacent to it, would it benefit from that, even though it's commercially developed and designated because it had been carved out of the original downtown-specific plan boundary? So it was zoned downtown rather than specific plan. And similarly, some of the businesses that are on East Catati Avenue, if we only made the changes to apply to the properties in the original strategy area, wouldn't be able to benefit from some of these changes? And we actually had businesses requesting to implement some of these things, and we had to tell them no, or that it was going to be a very time-consuming use process if they wanted to go through the current process. And so the Commission, upon hearing that, directed staff and the consultants to expand the boundary to essentially all commercial properties throughout the city, and that has applied to all the industrial-designated properties, commercial-designated properties, in addition to those in the strategy area on Grabenstein Highway and the downtown-specific
Thank you, Noah. As we get to Toolboxes B and C, you'll see examples of what Noah was just talking about with the expanded zoning districts. This first Toolbox A focuses on the pre-application process. Catati has a process currently, and as you can see from a lot of highlighted yellow text, we've added to that process to make it a much more engaging effort where the staff will harness information gathered not only on things like biological resources, where we have known wetland delineations, for example, but importantly, on laying out the entitlement process as a whole to an applicant at the very first step of their experience with the city. This is a very quick process. It's intended to highlight where there may be SEQA issues that are costly and time-consuming, but also to let applicants know with respect to the mix of uses they're contemplating, where they may be able to look at alternatives that fit the program that is established through the zoning ordinance a little bit more completely, and therefore save time and expense in the process. And this overall program is designed to have reliable information from department heads and to give feedback to applicants within roughly a month's time. And there were several communities in the hearing we looked to as good examples of how this process works well. It does take time and effort on the part of city staff, but it is our experience in looking at successful programs that that investment pays back many times over in terms of better projects or successful projects and less time spent in the long run, both by applicants and the city. So the pre-application process is, I like to think of it as the most important first step. So as we get into Toolbox B, you'll see in the table the various zoning districts outside the downtown to begin with in the first table. And this begins in your packets on page 75 and 76. And again, the recommended changes are in yellow. Changes that we identified as optional, that the Commission recommended, are in the paint color. And additional changes, you'll see in a minute, that the Planning Commission recommended during the study session, are highlighted in green. And as an example, artisan craft product manufacturing is a use that we have changed in the general, Grabenstein Commercial District, rather, from use permit, major use permit to minor use permit. And one of the reasons we feel confident of streamlining the process is that we have good standards in the code now to guide that. And of course, any use that is administratively approved can be appealed to the Planning Commission level, so the Planning Commission could have oversight if it's needed. And in the commercial industrial district, for example, that same use we had recommended and the Commission agreed should go to permitted. So that's an example of a use that can move forward in the process without the lengthy and time-consuming effort of a use permit application. And on the next slide, I think you'll see, we jump to design review. I'd like to, although the slideshow doesn't have the details of it, I'd like to just, by way of example, list a few more items that in particular, the Commission spends some time talking about brewery and brew pubs and brewery production. Different functions, one larger scale and one more retail, smaller scale, appropriate in the commercial districts, but with some level of use permit control on them. There are media production uses and other kinds of entertainment uses that were made permitted in the CE and CG districts, permitted in the commercial industrial district, and left not allowed in the CD district. Boutique wineries is another that the Commission added by use permit in several of the districts. And there were a series of changes to accommodate conference facilities, or I should say, commercial recreation facilities by minor use permit, meeting facilities by minor use permit in some cases, art and studios by, as permitted uses, subject to standards, and theaters where we had conventional use permits and switched to minor use permits. And this is your, I'm sure you're sensing a theme here, and that is that by adding standards to the code that are objective and understandable, going through a full public hearing before the Planning Commission can be avoided because many of the things the Commission has spent a lot of time focusing on are now embodied in the code and the process can be simplified. Okay, so the next toolbox is design review, that's C. The design review process works well in Catati in our outside judgment. What we wanted to do was make sure it stayed focused on the ministerial activity of aesthetic review, architectural standards, site planning, visual quality and character, and the judgment about uses themselves, the appropriateness of one use for another, is left to the code. And by better separating those, it makes the Commission's job, and in some cases, the staff's job in conducting design review much more straightforward and a lot faster for both the city and applicants. Simple changes, but separating functions. Next.
I would just, from staff's perspective, I would just add mixing kind of review language. So you'll see as the council sees in the presentation, the design review process has existing language that talks about use, and that just confuses what the intent of that process is. And so some of these are, just to clarify, and frankly, cut out some legal concerns over mixing design and use review under one title, which is designer view, obviously.
So Toolbox D focuses on mixed-use projects, and this is becoming an increasingly common and market-driven land use. And to this point, in fact, during the Planning Commission hearing, on the agenda was a downtown project that had residential uses on the second floor and retail on the ground. Uses might not benefit from this program because it adds flexibility to the commercial uses on the ground floor. Those vertically-integrated mixed-use projects are not as common as the ones that are separated horizontally, and we have seen a couple of those come forward in the city in recent months. We expect to see more of both kinds. What we wanted to do, based on the feedback we got, was find a way of, again, simplifying the process and adding flexibility so that we didn't, we would be able to preserve the concept of having a predominant commercial function along the street frontage and yet have residential uses above and behind that in many cases helped to underwrite the cost for the commercial development. And so a floor area ratio was introduced to ensure that there will be a non-residential component that is sufficient, and reference is made to the density limitations of the general plan that apply, and at the same time, we have a little bit more flexibility on exactly how those commercial uses are configured along the frontage of the property. We believe that this will help projects achieve the goals of the general plan, be consistent with those projects the Commission and Council has approved already, and at the same time, come forward in a much more efficient manner. The only change that was made with respect to alcoholic beverage sales was to, as you can see in Slide 16, make reference to where a use permit is already required in the zoning ordinance, so that we don't independently regulate alcoholic beverage sales in all cases, but rather focus on those uses where they are a conditional use in the zoning And on Slide 17, you don't see all of the text. This is the introduction. The packet has the full array of all of the definitions that were added to the code. There were a number of instances where, over time, uses had been identified that have come before the city or expected to come before the city, but weren't well-defined. There was ambiguity in the language, and so a lot of clarification was added through the definitions. We were able to limit the scale and size of uses to fit into a category that was in our judgment, staff's judgment, and the Commission's, consistent with the city's goals and policies. And so again, we think this provides a much broader or complete context to guide applicants and for the city to administer the code.
And staff would just add that there were some concerns over outdoor dining having impacts when that use is adjacent to residential, and so staff did identify and incorporate in the code a use permit requirement, minor use permit for outdoor dining on private property that's adjacent to residential land uses. And then just add to what Dick was saying, there's actually even some inaccuracies in the definitions currently. Staff kind of gave it a once-over to try to clean up it, eliminate areas of inconsistency and just inaccurate statements that we found when we were doing its review.
So Toolbox G is the funding options that are available, that is for information purposes only. And what we have done in this program is look at streamlining the process, adding flexibility and expanding some of the land use categories to accommodate a better, more synergistic mix of uses in and around the downtown. But we have not taken on the larger-scale programs that involve looking at certain kinds of higher-density projects, for example, looking at annexations, or annexation, there's one that's possible, and other changes that have genesis in the general plan that are much more extensive. And for instance, the gathering of information on biological resources. So MTC grants, MTC ABAG grants, and other federal transportation and housing authority grants are available, and we wanted to put kind of a inventory together to list those programs so that both applicants and the city can pursue these to help underwrite the cost of these more expensive future programs. Next slide. And so you have just a little bit in Slide 19 of the text of the informational Toolbox H on biology and habitat resources, along with a map that is, again, a broad brush overview of where we have developed properties, where we know from information we had uncovered in consultation with property owners and biologists that we have wetland resources that have been delineated and verified by the Army Corps of Engineers, where we suspect that there are critical habitat resources present and we know that additional surveys need to be conducted, and where properties are partially developed and may be able to avoid impacts by carefully planning the footprint of improvements. The city recently went through the process of entitling a small hotel at Highway 116 and Old Redwood Highway that benefited from that kind of thinking, understanding where the resources are and designing the project's footprint to avoid a significant impact of those resources. So this information is kind of a guide to additional work that has to be done with qualified experts to conduct those assessments and delineations and to create an inventory to the extent that we're able to, to share with property owners and applicants, to better inform them and to make sure they understand what the regulations are and how to protect resources while carefully designing a project around them. And that's something that will be somewhat costly. And so, for example, the previous toolbox with some of the funding sources may be a way of helping to underwrite the cost of gathering this information. Next slide. And so here you're looking at the existing zoning map with a red circle around the 15 acres that in slide 21 shows as a pre-zoning of Bradenstein Commercial. The ordinance that is before council this evening has as one of its components establishment of pre-zoning on that unincorporated property. This is not a annexation. It is simply the city's expression consistent with its general plan of what the zoning would be if and when annexation were to occur. But it's an important informational step in the process. As the program made its way through review and, in particular, as we came before the planning commission at the study session, we did have comments that came from a local resident focused on a variety of issues, including biology. Our initial study and negative declaration covers the full spectrum of potential environmental impacts from this program. And I think I can summarize a lot of thought that went into this by saying that none of the elements that are included in the ordinance before council would cause or lead to any significant environmental effect. All of the environmental protections currently in place remain in place. Every project will have to comply with CEQA as it comes forward. The process of streamlining the code, refining and adding clarity to the code would in and of itself not lead to either individually or collectively any significant effect in our judgment, and the commission concurred with that. This went through a 45-day review period, and there was a concurrence opinion that was issued by the State Department of Fish and Wildlife that NOAA has included in the So to summarize what we have done over nearly the past year, we began with community input, interviews, discussions, and presentations with a variety of different civic groups and interested parties, and presented information on the city's website as it was developed. We prepared an initial study and negative declaration that identified no significant effects, went through a 45-day review period, and there were comments that were responded to with the final ag-dec. The zoning code and zoning map amendments are both embodied in the draft ordinance that's in the council's packets. And lastly, number five on this slide makes reference to future action items. We did identify a series of different future steps that the city could consider as part of an expanded economic development program. But we thought that the scope of what's before council was comprehensive enough to stand on its own and meaningful enough in terms of what it will do for uses within the strategy area and around them.
And staff just wanted to add, as the council recall, in the strategic planning sessions that we held recently, regardless of any, you know, capacity to take on some of the recommendations for future economic development work, staff has committed and is building into our processes for the next fiscal year, making improvements to further enhance public outreach and engagement. The council recall references to sending notice of applications to all properties surrounding significant development sites or projects that are filed, applications that are filed to develop those sites, and then also building in a neighborhood meeting process to meet with those residents prior to a submittal or very early after a submittal. So that way folks get a chance to engage with the city early on these things, rather than having their first notice be when the project is teeing up for a public hearing. And then that's in addition to all of the additional website and other kind of behind-the-scenes work that we're doing to just get information out to the public basically early and often as much as possible.
And so to wrap up our presentation, what's before council this evening is a resolution to consider the final negative declaration, supported by the initial study with its conclusion of no significant effect, and the first reading of an ordinance that would include the changes to the zoning districts, the pre-zoning of the property on the west side of Highway 101, including the enhancements that were recommended by the planning commission, and the optional changes that we identified in several of the zoning districts. This would be a first reading of an ordinance that would come back to council at a future meeting for adoption. And to give you just a flavor of what NOAA and I have been making reference to, the fourth item on this slide are some of the future programs that we identified. And without going into great length here, I would just like to say that as a professional planner, Michael and I kind of jumped into this program at your city manager's encouragement and request because we saw an opportunity with the amount of economic development occurring all the way around Kattati to help the city harness some of that in a way that fits your local culture and character and history. And we found throughout the process, both in dealing with staff, civic groups, property owners, developers, and businesses, that there was a lot of information. Yes, some people were very frustrated. Others were surprised to see that the city was reaching out to listen to their experiences and try and harness that information to create a more efficient program. And, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but we believe this is a positive step forward. We think that it will net some very nice projects in the near term for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you as well to everybody who was behind the scenes working on putting all of that information together, as well as all the previous meetings and public input. So with that, I will bring it back to council, see if there are any questions for staff. I'm not seeing any hands going up or any, oh, here we go. All right, Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Skilman. Will we have an opportunity to go through these particular toolboxes as we look at this program on a one-by-one basis? Prior to, or are you going to open up a public comment first and then we'll go back through some of these issues? Because in looking at this packet, there's quite a bit of information, and there were some questions that I had regarding some various zones and some allowances, et cetera.
So, sure, I was just planning on seeing if there were any specific questions that council had, and then I was going to open it up for public comment. So if you'd rather ask them now or do it during your comment period, it's up to you.
I will ask them before you go back to public, but I'd like to come back to that, if I may.
Okay, I will come back to you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lamont, I see you're having your hand up as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I have a few questions. I'd like to thank staff and Mr. Lowiki for the, for presenting this tonight. As I read this in the packet, we waited through 300 pages after several days. I wondered how this would go in trying to present this with clarity and some level of brevity, and I think we managed to get that. So thank you for that. Some very minor questions, just some small issues, and they're probably questions more for Mr. House, but whoever wants to jump in is more than welcome. So as you look at packet page 98, I'm going to wheel back there while I'm talking, so give me just a second while I do that. It defines a boutique hotel. And I had a question about the benefit, the need, or the rationale for adding a secondary hotel category since we already have hotel or motel. And more to the point, what caught my eye was I saw it defined as a maximum of 50 guest rooms or suites, but I seem to remember it, and then doing some checking on the internet did confirm that the industry standard for a boutique hotel usually ranges from as little as 10 to up to around 100. And I'm wondering why we fit this particular number. If somebody could just illuminate me on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So in part of the discussion that came before the planning commission, there was an interest to try to incentivize uses that would generate activity downtown, and so, but also not overwhelm kind of some of the historic core and size of those structures. And so staff, in thinking about that direction, made some changes, and obviously all the highlights of green are in reaction to the planning commission comments and direction. And so we were looking at a way to try to allow and make a distinction between maybe a larger or broader-scale hotel, or maybe more standard market rate hotel that you might see kind of in more general areas, with something that would fit the size and character of downtown. You are absolutely correct in identifying that the definition, kind of the market definition of a boutique hotel is much broader than we're using, but we tried to come up with a number that would be economically viable for a new use while also limiting the kind of scale and massing of a building if somebody were to construct it in the downtown area.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense, and I think it actually makes a lot of sense for the community. I think they'll appreciate that. So thank you for that answer. Let's see, jumping to page 115 in the packet. There was a mention, I think this is the third page of attachment E, and about the middle of the page, issue sources wetlands, it talks about potentially creating a program to implement needed environmental mitigation for habitat loss. And it mentions that Oliver's property needs to be mitigated, and it also mentions that a portion of the Almond property may need to be mitigated as well. And I wonder if you could just flesh that out a little for me, what creating a program would look like, obviously. Is this help finding that pathway for people who are trying to find it? Is it looking for funding, and is it providing funding from a city level to help these properties? Those are the sort of questions that jumped out to me.
Yeah, so Dick, this attachment was primarily put together by the consultants in response to their comments, so I'll let him kind of flesh it out. But from the staff perspective, knowing the size and scale of any biologic resources in areas that we've identified, such as the Oliver's property or other properties of this specific plan, identified for certain development types or scales, is helpful to folks who might be interested in developing to know basically the amount of acreage that they would be required to mitigate. So the first level would be just doing a delineation map and then maybe identifying the quality of that habitat to get to a mitigation level or requirement, so then that could be basically turned into a cost number. Or alternatively, how that, where that resource is located on the site and how it might be preserved and enhanced in context of overall development project. And then I'll let Dick answer.
I think you've, actually, Mr. Lowiki, if you want to jump in, you can, but I think that gave me an idea where the intention was to go with this. It's basically an information piece. It's essentially predigesting to the degree we can the problem with some clarity and to give directions to what's possible or indeed what you can do to actually focus and turn this problem into actually a benefit. So if that makes sense, if I'm missing something, if there's something you'd like to add, please go ahead, Mr. Lowiki.
No, I think you've got a very good handle on it. I would just add that this appears to prospective developers and some property owners like a black box. And so we want to shine light where we can bring the science to explain what those constraints really mean. And in some cases, these constraints aren't just limited to internally, to within one property. They may spread between properties, so we thought it was important to take a broader look at it. Thank you.
No, I think that's good planning. Thank you for that. All right, just a couple more. Let's see. On packet page 128, there's mentions of various uses, excuse me, I got the wrong, it's 82. I'm jumping backwards here. One of the uses I noticed mentioned in the downtown, in CD, in our downtown quarter, was no uses for auto and vehicle sales. And I just wanted to confirm, is there a grandfathering? There is a grandfathering, I would imagine, of any existing facility?
That's correct, and it could be, that business could be sold, or even if a business were to just close and a new automotive business wants to open within a period of time, that would also be permitted.
Okay, so it does follow a very typical grandfather. Excellent. All right, last question for me. These are all pretty easy ones, so let's see. If we look at packet page 87, very minor question, but if you take a look at about the middle of the page, right below the green line that says brewery, brew pub, there's a line for convenience store. As we go over to the districts, I notice in the northern gateway, it says use permit, but then it also has a red line just below that. I wasn't sure if that line was to clarify something, the proposal was to change that, is something being possible to do or not. I might be missing something here, so suspect I am. If you could clarify that for me, that would be helpful.
Yeah, you're correct. That was a previously used that was not allowed at northern gateway, so the red is what was there before, and the use permit is now an allowance for that. And perhaps the color coding should have been switched.
Makes sense now that you pointed out. There were just a few of those, and I wanted to make sure I was looking at it the right way. I have some comments for later, but I will save those for the appropriate time. Thank you for answering that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just going to double-check with council members if there's anybody else who wanted to ask questions before Vice Mayor Moore. Okay, it looks like it is back to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Thank you, gentlemen, and all the parties that were involved, and this is quite an undertaking. In line with some of the questions that council member Lamont had, if you go to packet page 82 and you look at the uses and non-allowed uses... and you look at the uses and non-allowed uses. If I understand that and you look at the drive-through retail in the gravine scene corridor, it would require a use permit and also in the industrial corridor, it would require a use permit. Those are existing allowances within our zoning right now?
That's correct, right. But if you follow over to the right, it references a specific code section, and they're only allowed for pharmacies. So, it's specifically prohibited for retail, even though I know the code language is a little misleading. But you read the language and it's to accommodate drive-through pharmacy.
Okay. So, if we go through this this evening and then we bring it back again and we come through and we see that there's something that maybe we would like to consider changing, would it be an appropriate time to bring that up?
Now is the time to bring that up, and then it would be implemented based on direction from the council tonight into the second reading that is brought for the council at a future meeting.
Okay. So, if you look at packet page 83, under service stations, and you've got it under the East Catati, commercial, gravine scene, downtown. Service stations are allowed under the existing code with a use permit. Is that something that we would consider now that maybe service stations and the definition of a service station being a gas station or a filling station? Primarily or also for repair? And is that something that really does fit within those corridors moving forward?
I'm going to do a little definition research right now, but you are absolutely right. That's currently what it says about allowances. And I'll just do a little research to identify exactly what that code section provides and then also what the definition of service station currently is.
And just for a little bit more clarification on that, we not long ago had a potential multi-use gas station, convenience store proposal on 116 and Stony Point. And at that time, I think that the general consensus was, do we really need any more additional gas stations in light of how the technological advances are progressing and the diminishing requirements for gasoline?
So, in looking at the code section 17.42180, new service stations are prohibited when the property abuts residential? They're required to be a minimum of 500 feet between each service station? Must be located on arterial street with a minimum of 150 feet of frontage? At 15,000 square feet in size for the lot at a depth of 100 feet? And I'm getting to your question about the use. There are a number of standards with regards to architectural character, design, lighting, et cetera. And it does allow some accessory automotive service elements to a service station currently. But it does, the code is very prescriptive in how that site or those uses would be allowed in addition to requiring the use permit, which essentially gives the city the discretion to say yes or no. And one other option, if there's some concern over those uses, would be to modify the current definition to incorporate elements such as electric vehicle charging or those types of things that maybe would allow a current service station or a future one to transition to meet the future automotive styles and fueling type.
And maybe that would be something that we look at down the road as far as changing those definitions? For now, now we're just looking at particular zoning issues. I did have some other questions, if I may.
Sure, go ahead. Thank you.
So, just to close the loop on this, the definition does include vehicle services. So, essentially, it does include the ability for a new service station through the use permit to request those repair elements.
Okay, thank you for that. If we go back to packet page 90 and we look at under design review 17.62.040, number eight. It says, ensure that development complies with all applicable city standards and guidelines. Then we've got strike stricken out and does not adversely affect community health, safety, aesthetics, or natural resources. Why wouldn't we eliminate that?
So, from the staff perspective, other than aesthetics, which likely is an oversight that should be left, community health, safety, and well, natural resources actually could be left too, but community health and safety are actually an element of use. And so, this gets back to the intent that the consultant identified where this code section kind of blends designing review and some elements of use permit review. And from a legal standpoint, that's challenging because if we are trying to regulate the aesthetic appearance of a project, but we're also through that mechanism addressing use elements, we're kind of double dipping and it puts us in a little bit shaky ground legally. And I'll let Dick add to that.
I think that is hit the nail on the head. As I said during the presentation, our goal was to separate the land use decision-making process from the design and site plan review process. So, as we look at things like environmental resources and potential environmental effects, those are issues that would automatically come up during the land use review process pursuant to CEQA. We were trying to make the designer view process a ministerial process that was focused on architecture and site planning. And there are some gray areas. We look at compatibility of architecture, shadowing, solar access, those kinds of things. Those are certainly appropriate to designer view. But whether a project could have a significant effect on traffic operations is a CEQA issue, and that's best dealt with in the application process that CEQA is triggered.
And I would just add, there are some recent case law that has come down that is motivating some of these changes to have us draw clear lines between our discretionary processes, so planning processes such as discretionary, such as design review and use permits, to try to clarify the legal waters that each of these processes is in. But to your point, I think the language could be revised to state, ensure that development complies with all applicable city standards and guidelines and does not adversely affect community aesthetics or natural resources. I think that aesthetics, definitely, natural resources, depending on how it's applied. But I think that could be preserved under this section and still meet the intent of design review.
I would like to see that. And also, when you talk about some of the other regulations that are coming down so as not to have applicants have to double dip, are we primarily talking more in the housing arena?
No, it's actually, it's actually trying to prevent cities from double dipping through their process where we say, but it is, it is housing related. But this change would be broad to both sides of housing or commercial development. But it is somewhat motivated by housing issues and the litigation that I'm referring to was specific to a by right housing project that still had discretionary design review. So, that is accurate.
Okay. I had just a couple more clarifying questions, if I may. On page, packet page 93, under toolbox D and mixed use projects. Section B had reference to residential use components in a mixed use project shall only be allowed provided that a minimum FAR of .25 is achieved for the non-residential use component. That's the floor area ratio?
Correct.
Okay. And then when we talked about the floor area ratio, there was a reference to 40%? Where do we come up with that percentage?
So, our code currently references, within the CGCA and NG districts, you have to have a floor area ratio of 75% commercial to 25% residential. And the example I used, that almost seemed like a typo from the staff perspective and just broader planning policies. It would be uncommon to have a three, a four-story building, excuse, that was three floors of commercial and one floor of residential. That ratio is almost always or almost universally the opposite of that, and that's what this section is trying to get to. There is a separate section, number two here, that says all other districts has to have a 40% floor area or basically mix of the non-residential portions. So, it's trying to get more commercial in those other zoning districts as a ratio of the residential development or overall development.
And in light of how we may have been more optimistic in the past, in light of our limited commercial space, I can see where those numbers would have been skewed in that report or in that regard. But the 40% number is, as you read that, shall equal at least 40% of the residential, non-residential floor area of the entire site. I guess it's just to try to reverse that a little bit?
Yeah, that current language is to try to motivate more commercial development, but you are absolutely accurate that that has, that is a constraint given the types of development we're seeing where there's a lot of uncertainty with regards to commercial tenacity, getting new commercial uses, and there's a lot of certainty behind residential. And so, most developers who are trying to meet these ratios are essentially using the residential to subsidize the cost to build the commercial in a mixed use project. And so, to reduce that or to change that to where it was 25% consistent with the other districts would be moving in the direction to be a little bit more flexible and likely spur a little bit more development of residential housing with the commercial component at that reduced ratio.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. So, I'm not seeing any other hands going up from council. So, at this point, I will open it up to public comment and ask Lauren to facilitate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. And just a reminder to make a public comment, use the raised hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer or dial star nine if you're using gesture telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor or myself, the city clerk, to address you by name or phone number and for the audible Zoom notification that you have been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your treatment will begin. And Mayor Skilman, I see Lori Alderman does have her hand raised. Ms. Alderman, go ahead.
Hi. Okay, a couple things. I know this has been a long process, but we're spending, you're spending a lot of time tonight in a lot of detail on future development rather than, we are in a crisis right now. We don't know if this future development is going to happen. You need to put your focus and staff time into the economic development in the short term. That while this council meeting's been going on, they just announced there won't be any mass gatherings in Sonoma County, the health officer said, until Labor Day. So, there's things like the accordion festival and the music festival, and all those need to be dealt with. And yeah, I can understand why you guys are doing this, but this is not where your focus needs to be. We have, we have the, but businesses struggling and you're talking about more businesses and the, who knows if people are beginning able to invest in new buildings and all that? I understand why you've done this. The other thing is you have a big disconnect in public input and everything. It's been almost a year and we have not heard one word on the progress of the hotel. It's a secret officially. I mean, we've heard stuff, but we don't hear anything from the city. So, when we can do input, when we can do, there's nothing. It's a big, so you guys need to be more open and honest with us and the public, especially at this time with the crisis going on. You're not helping businesses now. This is what economic development needs to be done now. So, I guess that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Skilman, I have Kevin Gaiter. Go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I was just curious, did you all get a chance to see the email that I submitted, the letter I submitted? I guess I'll just read it now. First, as a lifelong member of this community, I would like to say that I appreciate the steps that the city staff, council, and planning commission are taking in order to have a more common sense approach to zoning new businesses and updated business models. I fully understand the need to ensure that businesses fit with the character and the needs of our town. However, as we move into the future, it's going to become more and more necessary to explore new ways for businesses to thrive. Our current situation only serves to drive that point home. I would like to voice my support for one specific zoning modification. In keeping with the directive of making the allowed uses equally available across the downtown, it makes sense to allow late night retail in the La Paz section of the downtown specific plan, subject to minor full use permit approval. This allows for oversight, yet opens up the possibility for creative, responsible uses of our downtown area. I also would just like to add that, but I think that a lot of these, the more I hear about these new changes to the plans, I hope that that's going to continue to advance, you know, the needs of having a walkable downtown and also to allow us to make use of and perhaps, you know, further develop the land that we have already taken up and we're already currently using as opposed to just building more on the outskirts and sort of adding to the town. I think there's a lot of parts of Catati that still aren't being made use of. And I feel like if we loosen up some of the restrictions, maybe we can get people to come in and try some different things with those. I think as everybody knows right now, that's going to be important in the future to be able to try some different things. Thank you.
Next, we have Brian Ling. Mr. Ling, go ahead.
Hello, this is Brian Ling. The owner and manager of the INS Business Park at 7911 Redwood Drive. We are now in our sixth decade of having our family business located in Catati. Just like to quickly say tonight, we support this proposed economic development plan. economic development plan and appreciated the opportunity to be involved through the consultant and staff throughout the process. Do not have any specific questions or concerns tonight. Um, I want to add, again, that I personally have been following Cattati business, economic development, and the politics behind it, uh, for most of my life here. And, uh, this, this project signifies a new tone for the better, coming from every office within City Hall. And I just can't tell you how much I appreciate it. It's a great step forward. I, I think it's very forward in its thinking. There's a whole lot more to be done, totally understand that, but, uh, we need some roadmaps that we can encourage businesses to come and join us here in Cattati, and this is a great start. So I, I just want to say thank you for doing that. We look forward to working on the future implementation items as they were described. And for me personally, uh, certainly I will stay involved in the Grabenstein Corridor planning area as best I can offer. And again, thank you very much for moving this forward.
Next, it's Jenny Baker. Ms. Baker, go ahead.
It looks like she's still muted. Are you there, Ms. Baker? Can you hear me now? Hello? Hello? Yes, you can hear it now. Oh, okay, good. All right. Well, actually, that gives me a chance to start over. First of all, I would like to thank, um, the staff, Noah Hush, and the developers for, um, all the work that they have done in response to some of my earlier comments and questions. Um, I, I really appreciate that. So thank you. Um, I wanted to piggyback on some of the other comments that were just made by a couple of earlier speakers. Um, I have been concerned about why there is so much emphasis and energy being put into new development on the west side of the freeway when there are still businesses struggling in downtown Cattati and east of the freeway. And I do agree with the comment that was just made that, um, we don't know what's going to be happening with small businesses now as a result of the current crisis. And do we really need to be building new businesses when, uh, we, when there are still, you know, empty businesses or struggling businesses downtown that need support? Um, the other thing was, um, that there's a comment somewhere about, in the, in the paper somewhere, about quality of life being improved by people who can enjoy more shopping and eating out experiences. And I just wanted to say that a lot of people I know in Cattati love Cattati because it's small, because of things like the walking trails, because of the access to nature. And I've met a number of people who've kind of, when I've mentioned future development on the west side, their response has been, oh, no, we came to Cattati because we like it the way it is, um, and we don't want to see a whole lot of new developments. Um, although those same people want to support the small existing businesses that are here downtown now. And, um, uh, I think those were my main points. But I was also concerned that, yes, that new development on the west side could actually draw away from businesses downtown and on the east side, Cattati Avenue, where currently there are, um, businesses that, you know, not all of them are full, not all of them are doing well, and, um, it would be good to see support for existing businesses first and foremost. Thank you.
Next, it's Randy Jean. Randy, go ahead. And I see they're unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything. Are you still there, Randy Jean? Wow, I see that they're still unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything. Are we having any technical difficulties or? Nope, not on the end. Okay. Um, well, let's see if anybody else has a hand up.
We do have a telephone call-in listener.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, with the last four digits of eight-four-zero-nine. If you'd like to talk, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm seeing that eight-four-zero-nine is unmuted, and there's a little bit of sound coming out, but is that Randy Jean trying to get through?
You've unmuted me, but I didn't ask to speak.
Oh, okay. Did you have anything for a public comment on this issue?
Uh, not on this issue. I had a hell of a time getting on, and I think I should make your council aware of that. When you say it's supposed to be on your agenda, I shouldn't have to go through three different agenda sites to get to the, uh, uh, the directions to get on. It should be on your main agenda, which is under your council meetings, and it's not there. So it took me like twenty minutes just to find this number. So that way I couldn't participate most of the, uh, the rest of the meeting. Uh, you guys need to get your act together. Thank you. That's all I have.
That's okay. Um, and let's try unmuting Randy Jean again and see if there's sound Okay, that was just fortuitous timing that we got a phone call, so I assumed it was this party trying to call in, since it doesn't sound like their computer audio may be working. Okay, Mayor Stilman, as far as other attendees, there's nobody else with their hand raised or phone callers. Okay. Well, with apologies to Randy Jean, if you're able to come through audibly at some point, please let us know. Um, so with that, I'll bring it back to council, see if there's anybody who would like to make comments. I see Councilmember DeLasso has his hand up. Go ahead, Councilmember DeLasso.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Um, I do want to first thank, uh, Noah and, uh, the consultants. Um, this was a tome of information, and, um, you folks worked your magic and did some amazing work, especially in a lot of these toolboxes here. So, um, and I appreciate that because it, it seems like there's, there's this first step of sort of identifying the types of businesses and locations for them in what we have left, or as businesses leave the area, we have room for new ones to come in. And it's something, um, it, it's a great first step, but of course, you know, the real work begins in, um, trying to then attract between the chamber and city staff and council members and word of mouth, um, and get some of these business types to come in. And I'm kind of curious, um, I'll throw this question to Noah, and you can, uh, reply or bounce it out to one of the consultants, but was something specific like, um, sales tax looked at in some of these businesses? I, I would assume some of the services may not have sales tax that some of the, um, goods or supplies would have. And I'm just wondering if that weighed in at all in, uh, making some of these decisions?
Uh, I, from a staff standpoint, I'll let, I'll let Dick, um, follow up because he did a lot of the interviews with the individual business owners, uh, at the beginning. But from the staff standpoint, it was more about general economic activity. So, um, looking at the market and trying to figure out ways to allow an existing business, I, I will just to respond to some of the other comments, we did a lot of, a lot of outreach to our existing businesses, and there's a lot in this packet that, um, is intended to target them specifically, and I can, I'm happy to answer some detailed questions on that. But, um, one of the things we're looking for in general is just creating that synergy of an active downtown. And as, as we are transitioning away from a retail shopping environment, because people are buying things online, what shakes out is services and experiences with almost an accessory retail component. And so we're trying to give our existing businesses and new future development, uh, an opportunity to be more creative in their, in their business modeling, to try new things without having to check in with City Hall on every, every minor incremental change they make, and just to generally create more interesting opportunities to try to drive more traffic into their businesses, whether they're a retail business that wants to experiment with some services, or they're a service business that wants to experiment with some minor, you know, craft product manufacturing or, or those types of things. The idea is just to generate activity and use in the downtown as well as, uh, for the other commercial businesses that are, uh, existing but struggling in the new retail environment or maybe future development that might occur.
No, that's very good. Thank you. I didn't know if, um, Mr. Lukey was gonna add to that, or you don't need to. I just.
If, if I may, uh, council member, um, it is a very good question. And, um, I would phrase, I agree with everything Noah has just said, and I would add that, uh, we purposefully look at the sustainability of existing businesses and retail space separately from the opportunity to expand the base of retail floor area. They're, they're different entities and, and different opportunities, but we looked at both of those in the context of demand. Um, Cattati, uh, as you all well know, is situated at, at the junction of two major corridors, one sixteen and, uh, one oh-one. And, um, what grew and grew, and the economists for the city reported to us just as we were getting started, is that the leakage of discretionary retail purchases from Cattati residents was very substantial in a number of categories. Now, we know we can't fill all those categories, but it told us that, that there was considerable elasticity in demand and demand that could be captured locally if the right opportunities were created. And so that's what we went after, uh, knowing that, uh, uh, we wouldn't ever get to the point of, of capturing, uh, you know, all of it, uh, not even a major part of it, but there was a considerable opportunity to expand from what's, what's being, uh, spent within the community today.
That's great, and I appreciate, um, that forethought that all of you really did put into this. You know, um, there was a comment made by someone, I, I didn't write down who that was, but it was how, might have been Ms. Baker, about how many people like Cattati as it is. And again, I've heard that for the thirty-plus years that I've lived in town and been involved with the city, and it, it's very true. And I just kind of want to add to that, that we do need to have a diversified cadre of businesses that can adapt to new situations. I think, you know, we're watching, as a simplistic, uh, approach, we're watching what some restaurants are doing, um, to try to stay alive by doing takeout or delivery. We're watching, you know, big businesses switching gears to making something that is crucial and needed for medical community with our COVID- nineteen crisis going on. So, um, that, that diversification and allowing businesses the opportunity to diversify, I think is an important element to have in, in this whole, uh, plan. So I really do applaud you. And I guess, um, I don't know, I guess the last thing, I'll say at this point, this is just more of a statement than any more questions I have, but, um, I think this really does set a tone for future businesses here in our town. And not just from an economic standpoint, but I think there's a number of aspects, um, that have already been mentioned, and I won't need to recount those, uh, that will also be impacted in a very positive way. So, uh, to everybody involved, including, uh, the public comment, we've had eight or nine people, you know, that have logged in tonight, really do appreciate that. And, uh, Mayor, I'll, I'll save my time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And before I go to see if there are any other council members who have, uh, further comments, I noticed that there was a new, uh, call-in, um, with a phone number three-eight-four-three, the last four digits. I wanted to double-check, just open it briefly to them and see if that was Randy Jean trying to call in with our public comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this is Randy Jean. I was having trouble, uh, wasn't recognizing my microphone on my home computer, so I finally called in, and then you guys had already moved on. Anyway, I don't know if there's time for me to speak with Noah publicly.
No, it's fine. We'll give you three minutes now. I'm reopening the public comments section so that you can go ahead and have your comments known. And believe me, with all of the Zoom meetings I've been doing, I completely understand and empathize. So go ahead.
I had a little panic moment there. Um, anyway, yes, I just want to thank you guys for opening up, uh, the ability to speak. And I'm new to Cattati as a business. Uh, my wife and I have taken over the old, uh, Miller Driving School, eighty-three, uh, one-hundred there on, uh, Old Redwood Highway. And I just wanted to say that we were only, uh, really, you know, had a soft opening for about a month, and then COVID hit, but the reception from the locals and, uh, you know, the people that came in and visited our, our store, uh, was just fantastic. Everybody said, you know, they have been waiting for a store like this. This is going to be so great. And we're just happy that the reception's been so positive because we weren't sure how we would be received. So, uh, from the locals and from our customers, I, I think it's going to be a real positive asset to the downtown area, uh, in many, many ways. So we're, we're very excited and looking forward to, uh, moving forward as this whole process unfolds and the zoning is, uh, you know, is more receptive to what we're doing. And I just wanted to, um, you know, thank you guys all for pushing and, and helping along with that process.
Okay. Well, thank you for everybody who participated with public comments. Um, I will now officially close public comments, and we'll bring it back to council. I see, um, Councilmember Landman has his hand up. Want to go ahead, Councilmember Landman?
There we go. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just a few comments. Um, first of all, mention thanking staff for summarizing this rather deep packet piece into such a clear and concise agenda piece. Also should mention thanks to the planning commission for taking such a thorough pass through this and shaping and guiding it. I particularly appreciate and like the partisan craft focus that was evidently there addition. Uh, I, I think that was helpful and fits the community well. And I liked the direction from the gate to expand this to include the larger area, including East Cattati, essentially the whole community. Uh, given the situation, I think that was really beneficial. So I, I, I think that's a good thing. This whole agenda piece really strikes me as just a continuation of the move to greater clarity for applicants in this community that we've been working on for a long time now. One of our speakers mentioned that they appreciated this, and they felt it was something new, and I appreciate their appreciation. But actually, I see this to myself as, if not a culmination, at least a progression of a process that Mayor Robert Coleman started ten years ago, uh, taking a look at what we can do in Cattati. We have a very narrow path in town here. We learned a decade ago, Cattati likes being a small town. We knew that. But we learned additionally, at the same time, they still want it as easy as possible with the rules that we have in this community for people to work through being part of the community, starting a business, dealing with City Hall and planning. And we've been making an effort to make that work better on that very narrow path. Uh, so I appreciate it. I think we're getting ahead on that. So I just wanted to speak to, suggested, uh, there was a worry that perhaps opening up, taking a look at the Grabenstein area might tend to dilute a focus or diminish business in, in other sectors. And I can understand that concern. There's always a small And I can understand that concern. It's always a small possibility. And I would point out, I understand this to be there, because these are all different areas. And they're all different areas that are going to have different types of surfaces. And indeed, that's why they have different allowed uses. What works in Gravenstein would never work in the downtown, and vice versa, of course. And living in the area, walking by Gravenstein quite often, by the shopping center, by Johnny Johnson, looking at the steady traffic we have, heading back out towards Sebastopol and points farther, both directions, every day, all day long. That is a significant place for revenue generation and hopefully is more beneficial to all of us rather than problematic for any of our other sections of the town. So I hope that is the case. That's what I, I believe it to be. So two last things I wanted to say. First, I wanted to point out one concern I do have, which I felt I should mention. On Packet Page 120, we're looking at potential future items. And there's a mention potentially under 4A of looking at an amendment of the general plan in order to allow residential densities above 15 units per acre. And I wanted to kind of be giving fair warning that I really need to be strongly convinced of the value, you know, re affordability of housing, which I get, but also that combined with the provision of good neighborhoods, which I think we've really been successful with in this town for a decade, versus the problem of increased density. Because I, I think you've heard it here a few times tonight, and I think we all know it to be true. This is something Khatati is very clear about. They don't want to grow incessantly. And so anything that starts to touch on this potentially crosses that bright line. So I, I'll need really to take a good look at that. I understand with some of our, looking at cottage-style development, that seems like a good possibility. But I'm just saying, there'll have to be some real clarity, at least from my perspective, if somebody brings that forward from staff. And I'll just close by saying I'm very supportive of what my colleague, Mr. Moore, suggested of adding back aesthetics and natural, I can't even read my writing anymore, natural reserves. And making sure that it does not adversely affect aesthetics and natural reserves. So I would also look to put that back in as long as it doesn't cross any lines legally. And this is my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And I see Vice Mayor Moore has his hand up. So go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. I would concur with my fellow councilmembers, Delso and Landman. I, I think this kinda gives us another arrow in the quiver, if you will. I think if we look at that and then look at the whole, at the city as a whole, that will allow us to, to focus on some of the existing businesses we have as well as make inviting for the type of business that could come in that would complement and not necessarily take away from the downtown or East Khatati or any of those areas. So, so I, I do think that it allows us to have, just as Mr. House indicated, a greater flexibility, which is good, while still maintaining the, the undefinable Khatati culture character. As I've heard that referenced quite a bit, I'm not quite certain how that's defined. But I do think that this is a positive in that regard. And, and I would support this. And I, and I think one of the other things to consider as we look at encouraging greater walkability in Khatati, the whole future of work and people commuting and driving hours to and from work in different areas, I think is gonna change drastically in light of the situation that we've seen with COVID-19 and, and many businesses saying, oh, you know, we don't want you to telework, or we're not able to do the telework. Well, it's amazing how many businesses have now said, oh, we can do the telework, and we are doing the telework. So, so I think with that in mind, we're gonna have a lot less people leaving the area and hopefully more people as they're working from home, going out in the evenings and weekends, et cetera, and walking in downtown and walking East Khatati and potentially walking over into the Gravenstein area, as Councilman Landman said. You know, it's not that great a distance, and it's a great proximity. And I think there's gonna be some overflow positively. And with that, I'll leave it at that. Thank you. And thank you for the work put into that.
Okay, thank you. And I see Councilmember Harvey has her hand up as well. Go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you. I agree with all that's been said. I don't wanna rehash a lot of it. Do wanna thank everyone, in particular the business community that participated. It's so nice to hear when they feel like their voices have been heard and are able to include things. The aspects around building things versus reusing things that are there, I think we always have to keep in mind that properties are owned by individuals and individuals choose what they wanna do with, with their properties. It's not the city that's building these things. It's landowners and developers that, that are doing that. I really like the concept of toolkit, because I think that that, whether you are trying to repurpose a building or build a new building or whatever, this concept of having a toolkit and tools in the toolkit, for me, as a very simple mindset, and that's, you know, that there's tools in the toolbox for you to be able to use. So I may not know exactly what I'm gonna build today, but there's tools in the toolbox. And with those tools, I will be able to achieve something. As was pointed out, I think a lot of things are gonna change based on COVID-19. And I think that it is an appropriate time right now, of course, to have these tools in the toolbox, because as we move through these different stages that have been outlined for our state, businesses are gonna have to rethink some of how they do their business day to day. And so always having tools in that toolbox to be able to do that, I think will always be helpful. But there was a lot of information, and really, thank you to everyone for getting us to this point.
Okay, yes, and I'll echo everybody's appreciation expressed to staff and as well as the business owners that participated and are also on the call. So it looks like we have no further questions or comments, so we'll bring it back to council.
Mayor, I have a question. This is a brief question. This is Councilmember Delso.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Wait, sorry?
I'd say go ahead, Councilmember. I think you were hearing an echo.
I think I was. I thought that was just my brain working like it normally does. Do we, in making a motion when it's that time and right now we're close, do both items one and two get tagged together in one motion? Or do we need two separate motions on these?
Uh, this is Doug House. I believe you're gonna make two separate motions. One, for if, if the direction is support, one would be to take action on the resolution. And the second would be to introduce the ordinance and conduct the first reading. It's important for the resolution to be done first, since that's the CEQA document.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, Noah. I appreciate that. I am going to make a motion and see if there's any reaction to it. I move to adopt a resolution approving the Economic Development Implementation Program, IS/ND, and finding the initial study and negative declaration as complete pursuant to CEQA in its conclusion that the Economic Development Implementation Program could not have a significant effect on the environment.
And this is Mark Landman. I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we just please get a roll call vote? Councilmember Delso?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
That would be an exhaustive yes.
Mayor Skilman? Yes, thank you. So we have a five oh vote in favor of the first motion to adopt the resolution.
Well, I could keep rolling, but I was hoping somebody else was gonna jump in.
I would be happy to make a motion.
All right, go for it.
I would make a motion that we introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance to implement the Economic Development and Implementation Program to encourage additional economic development in Khatati consisting of both A, the proposed zoning code text amendments, and B, the zoning map amendments.
This is Susan. I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I'll note as well that there were a couple amendments as we were doing the presentation. So let's do a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Delso?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman? Yes. So we'll show that's a five oh vote as well for item number A2. And with that, we'll thank everybody involved for their participation and efforts to get this before us and look forward to seeing it back again for a second reading. So we'll move on now to item 12, the city manager's report. With that, we'll open it up to City Manager Damien Obit.
Thank you, members of the council. So the, the big news today is that the health officer issued a new amended park order at the end of the day today. And this is up on the city website as well, as well as pushed out via our social media. And the basics, this sort of the basic outline of what the amended park order is, is it's what the county's calling soft, soft closure, meaning that residents can use the parks and they can access only by non-vehicular means. So, so driving to parks is not supposed to be the way that people get there unless you need to drive for ADA access. And I think the general intent here is that, that people that are living near parks should be the ones using those parks, like neighborhood parks. But they don't want to encourage people from, from outside the area to come into the parks and create large crowds at the parks. So parks are available for walking, running, hiking, or cycling on trails. Group events and sports are still prohibited at the parks. The amenities are still closed, so that means restrooms, picnic tables, benches, water fountains, parking lots, basketball courts, et cetera. The facial covering order is still in effect by the county. That's if you are gonna come within six feet of other people that you don't live with. And then the order remains in effect until further notice. And so more specifically to Khatati, that based on this new order from the county, we will be keeping our basketball and tennis courts closed for now. We're updating the signage of playgrounds, noticing that they are, that their closure is continuing. We're gonna post updated signage at main entry points to parks and trails indicating the new order and the reminders. And then we obviously would have a process if someone wants permission to park for ADA access. And I know one thing that got a lot of attention is the Laguna Trail. So bike access is now permitted by, permitted by the county for bicycles on Class 1 trails, along with walking, but everyone's supposed to continue to follow the social distancing order. That's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. And so you can be seeing signage going out tomorrow at our parks that would conform with this new county order. On the construction side of things, we have these on our website, but the William Street and Olaf Sewer Main replacement project, that's a design, right? It's on track to go out to bid on May 8. And so you guys will be seeing that probably the first meeting in June to see what kind of bids we got. And if it remained on that track, construction will probably begin roughly a month later, so early July. We are making the finishing touches on the West School Street path bid package. That's expected to go out the second weekend of May for bidding. And if it moves forward, construction would be July and August. And that one is restricted by environmental, sort of the environmental review and sense of habitat. So it has to be done basically during the summer. So that, that's the window that we have to hit if we're gonna do that project this year. And then the wayfinding project continues. So we expect the sign fabrication order to be submitted this week. And it typically takes about four to five weeks to fabricate and deliver the signs. So if the construction, this type of construction is permitted by the county health officer at that time, they would go up probably in mid-July. And Public Works crews are all on the job, operating our water and sewer systems, maintain our fleet of vehicles, and they're out and about. I'm sure you've seen, if you've had a chance to get out of the house, you can go out and do essential activities. But they're mowing city properties, maintaining city parks and trails, responding to public for various issues in the infrastructure. And, and in addition to the crews, of course, you know, Public Works office staff are still at work moving everything forward, our building and planning staff, as you kind of heard tonight. They're still part of work moving everything forward. And same with our administrative services department, as well as my office. So, you know, unfortunately, we've had to temporarily limit walk-in, restrict walk-in customers to City Hall, but we're all still working and moving stuff forward. But hopefully we're in good shape, pretty ready to, um, when things lift from this COVID, the COVID situation we're in now. One more other kind of piece of interesting, actually not interesting, good news, is I think you guys knew that on Monday, we have a food drive here at City Hall headed by the community center, and that was in partnership with Redwood Empire Food Bank. And so our collection, our final count for food collections was over 1,100 pounds of food, which will provide about 947 meals to those in need, and collected almost $1,400 in cash donations, which enables Redwood Empire Food Bank to purchase almost $5,500 worth of groceries. We're, we're very proud of the community for coming out big and helping with the food drive. It's actually very impressive, because the amount of donated food and the money donated is equal to or exceeds what they see in some of the bigger cities in this county. So look, Khatati had a very impressive food drive, so it was really nice to see that. And we're also regularly updating our virtual recreation page on, on the city website. And this, this page provides families with resources to stay active, creative, and learn while practicing social distancing, virtual courses of things like museums, online youth and adult exercise classes, craft instruction, if you have more. We're also working with our class instructors to offer virtual programming, so check back often. So we have a date. We're still hosting our Keep Khatati Connected and Rancho Khatati High School Cougar Challenge social media contest. And this was created by the Rancho Khatati High School hospitality and recreation class. So you can follow along on social media as we challenge the community through various at-home activities for a chance to win prizes donated by local businesses. And, and then just generally, as we continue to navigate through the shelter in place orders, be on the lookout for more adapted recreation programming as the, you know, hopefully as we go through a, a phased reopening that allows more types of activities. So just, things are, things are continually updating. So keep an eye on those, on those things. And if you have any questions, you can always contact Ashley at 665-4222, or a Wilson at khatatisity.org, or of course, our website or our social media sites. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to...
Okay, so are there any questions from council for the city manager about his report? Okay, seeing then, I'll move on to item 13, city council member reports. Let's start with Councilmember Harvey. Have you got anything to report out for this week?
Sorry, I had to unmute. The only report I have is I attended virtually the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting. And they have already received some preliminary numbers about waste. So they've already taken the steps to reduce the budget for next year. And they started with a 10% reduction. So they cut back on quite a few items for next year's budget in anticipation of what may happen because of COVID-19. So again, that was preliminary, so we'll see the final next month. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Landman, have you got anything to report out this meeting?
Yeah, very shortly. We've been continuing to have our Sonoma County Mayor's and Councilmembers Legislative Committee meetings via phone for the last few weeks, mostly just to keep everybody up to date about what's going on in their communities, what are mutual, what are the individual concerns? And sometimes we get some lessons from that. We're going to be having actually two meetings this week. Thursday, we're going to have a morning with Representative Jared Huffman. And then Friday, we're going to have a morning with Representative Mike Thompson. We were supposed to have Jared last week, but as you know, their schedule is rather busy right now. So this would be an opportunity to hear from both of them. And also I'll mention to staff if there's any local concerns, questions, or anything that we need to get to them in that setting, I'd be happy to share it. So please contact me offline and I'd be happy to put that forward. And that's all I have for this week. Other than another week or so, I think I'll be ready for my second COVID haircut.
Excellent.
Well, we'll see about that.
Okay. And then Councilmember Delasso, have you got anything to report out this meeting?
I do not have anything to report out. Thank you.
Okay, and then I'll check with Vice Mayor Moore. Have you got anything to report?
We did have our quarterly REMF meeting last week, of course, Zoom. And as you can imagine, the insurance industry is in quite an upheaval right now. The health plan is doing okay. We are in line with our renewals at roughly 14%, but we're still sitting on pretty good reserves. As a matter of fact, the board voted not to charge additional reserves to the city, so we're just going to pay the increase in the premiums. There, in the property casualty world, it's still way up in the air. And the workers' comp world is also up in the air with the COVID. So at our next council meeting, I will present a spreadsheet that will have more of the specific information on the various programs. It'll be much easier to digest. And that's it on that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I don't have anything specific to report out. We've been having weekly meetings with the mayors of all the cities just to keep lines of communication open as well as be able to check in with supervisors. So that's been very helpful. And then I just pass on any information to our City Manager for sharing out as needed. Okay, so I think that's it for City Councilmember Reports. We'll move on to item 14, which is Public Comment on Non-Auction Agenda Items. And I'll turn it back over to our City Clerk, Lauren Burgess.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. And once again, to make public comment, use the raising hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer or dial star nine if you are using gesture telephone. Listen carefully for the mayor or myself, the city clerk, to address you by name or phone number and for the audible Zoom notification that you have been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, you have three minutes. We'll begin. Ms. Alderman, go ahead.
Hi, I have a few on future agenda items. I think you really need to have some kind of public meeting about the actions you need to take for COVID-19. There's no information, no, it's always you're promoting somebody else's program, not yours. And we don't know also the budget, what the effects of that, and how, and generally how we can support each other. Like I worry about the seniors at the mobile home parks in Khatati. They've had nothing. There's a lot of issues, like there's the, it's not quite set up, but seniors at risk with COVID can get, the city can pay for, pays a little bit of a share, but then FEMA and state monies pay for them to have meals delivered from local restaurants and stuff during the COVID. Those kind of things need to be dealt with now, not later. And so we should have more of a concerted effort of getting everything together for the, during this crisis. The other issue I want for future agenda items is Sonoma State University is getting $5 million for housing. It's now going to be homeless. It was supposed to be overflow on the hospitals. But they keep talking about Rona Park. They're working with Rona Park. And at the county meeting this morning, they didn't even mention Khatati and we're actually closer than most of Rona Park. So we need to have some kind of agenda item on how are we, how we are affected and how that is going to work because it can go, it may go all the way to, they were saying, August. So other than that, that's it. Thanks.
Mayor Skilman, I have no other answers at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we will close with a comment on non-action agenda items and move on to item 15. And I'll check in again with our City Clerk, Lauren Burgess. I understand, I think there was some information received, but it was emails to us, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Ginger had sent an email. I will make sure that gets attached and forwarded. I apologize for the delay. Also, every other thing that has been received via email has been attached and available on the meeting portal.
Okay, great. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn, well, wait, sorry. I'm going to announce a closed session topic, which is going to be Public Employee Performance Evaluation, Public Performance, Public Employee Performance Evaluation titled City Manager. And wanted to first open up to public comments, if anybody had any comments about our closed session topic. Now would be the time before adjournment meeting.
Ms. Alderman, go ahead.
I would like to comment on Mr. Obit's evaluation. A lot of the, a lot of the issues that are in my federal lawsuit have to do with Mr. Obit's behavior, such as over 20 months, he finally sent one sentence a week ago, but he didn't reply to mine emails. And he replied to, like, the person who was cyber stalking me in January, he replied to them 12 times in January. You've got it, he has been doing things to make public comment not, and public input not important in this town. And you guys need to address that in his, in his evaluation, that he's not, he's made the situation worse. And things like, I let it go through, but I was right. And you guys had to cover yourself on this weed abatement. It was a public hearing. It was supposed to be under the public hearing tonight. And you put it on a consent calendar and I took the fire district and we said, let's all, you know, it'll be legal. But this isn't how it should be. It should have been the, you know, the, it should have been that we had the right date for a public hearing that was unnoticed and everything like that. You guys have to not cover yourself so much. And Damian is really good at covering this stuff. And you guys need to deal with that in the evaluation. That's about it. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Ginger, go ahead.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to comment. It was probably six, eight months ago now. But I just wanted to let the council know that I actually had, I believe it was for, you know, really relatively serious to me issues with the city and the way things were going. And I brought them to Damian and he made some time and sat down with me and we went over those issues that I had. And, you know, he helped me come to some satisfactory conclusions of those and ways to deal with the issues I had. And just wanted to let the council know that he definitely did address my issues and I felt heard and helped and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Skilman, I have no other comments.
Okay, thank you very much for the public comments. And with that, we'll adjourn the council meeting to a closed session at 9:39 PM. Thank you guys so much.